I appreciate that, thank you. All right, item 3.1 is a public hearing related to personal marijuana cultivation, fines and civil penalties, and criminalization of land use. Staff, would you please tell us about this?
Mayor and Council, this is a proposed amendment to El Cajon Municipal Code Titles 1 and 17. It's to add a new chapter for personal marijuana cultivation consistent with state law, and add language that further defines and clarifies the city's existing prohibition on marijuana dispensaries, manufacturing, cultivation, storage, and mobile deliveries, and to increase administrative fines and civil penalties for violations of land use and building code ordinances. On November 8th last year, California voters approved Proposition 64, which allows adult use of marijuana by legalizing the possession, use, and cultivation of non-medical marijuana for those who are 21 years of age or older. It also authorizes a comprehensive state system to regulate commercial marijuana activity. On November 15th of last year, the City Council extended an urgency ordinance to prohibit the outdoor cultivation of marijuana by individuals for personal use in all zones within the city until the staff could return with proposed code amendments that address outdoor cultivation. Historically, the City Council has been opposed to the state's approach regarding the legalization of marijuana, mainly citing public health concerns, safety of the youth, and inconsistency with the City Council's economic development goals. Since 2010, medical marijuana dispensaries were prohibited in the city's commercial zones, and in January of last year, the City Council amended the municipal code to explicitly prohibit marijuana dispensaries, manufacturing, cultivation, and storage of marijuana in all zones, as well as the delivery of marijuana products. Additionally, the code currently limits fines to a maximum $500 per day per violation, and civil penalties up to $300 per day. This is for any violation of the code, not specific just to marijuana. So the proposed code amendments will do the following: prohibit outdoor growing activities for personal use; it acknowledges state law which permits individuals who use their private residence for personal marijuana cultivation; it reiterates the prohibition of all commercial marijuana activity in the city; it allows for immediate $2,500 fine authority for illegal marijuana dispensaries; it includes penalties of up to $2,500 per day for each violation of that chapter; it increases the city's current fine limit from $500 to $2,500 for land use and building code violations. There was a need for us to update our current fines, penalties, since they have not been updated since the 1980s. Also, civil penalties from $300 to $500 per day per violation, and continues to increase to $1,000 per day for violation of non-commercial action, so think substandard conditions. When the building official brings to the City Council a substandard condition such as the condition of someone's residence, that's where this will be applicable. And up to $2,500 per day for violation of the commercial actions such as a dispensary. So a draft ordinance has been presented to the City Council containing amendments to the El Cajon Municipal Code. It's in an underlined strikeout format, and the draft amendments include changes consistent with the City Council's direction as stated in the urgency ordinance. And they're as follows: so it adds this new chapter, personal cultivation of marijuana; it deletes marijuana definitions that are held in a different part of the zoning code, and brings it together under this new chapter; it makes clarification edits to land use tables found in the zoning code; and it makes minor clarification edits to the open space chapter. So there's an assurance of consistency through the zoning code. And again, it increases fines and penalties in the applicable section in Title 1. And so with that, on September 5th of last month, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on these proposed zoning code amendments. No members of the public spoke regarding this item. The Commission discussed the proposed amendments, agreed that they were in line with the City Council's direction, with the addition, and with the Planning Commission's addition, that there was clear language in the ordinance amendments that the proposed $2,500 fine was applicable per day per violation. So staff's recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed amendments, and that the mayor direct the city clerk to read the ordinance by title if they are approved. The staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Nice report. Does the Council have any questions, or staff? Tony, I have a question. These fines, would they be to the property owner, or would they be to the person running the dispensary?
Mayor and Council, the code allows us to apply the fine to the property owner as well as the one causing the violation.
So does that mean you could fine the property owner and, at the same time, and the person committing the violation, so you can have $5,000?
Yes.
Is that per day?
Yes.
That's significant teeth on that. Okay.
Just a minute, I got one question.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
No one would be grandfathered in under this proposal, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I'd like to open the public hearing and entertain public testimony. Darryl, do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we actually have 10 speaker cards, and we can begin with Patricia Williams, Ms. Williams.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mayor, hi, Council. I'm here to speak on behalf, I agree with this. I am also a part of ECTLC, and as a young child, I had easy access to marijuana. That led to being an intravenous methamphetamine user. I think that all of this needs to not be around, I mean, we have enough trouble with drugs and alcohol in the city of El Cajon, and I don't think that it should be so easily obtainable. I mean, people who are growing it on their property, they leave it open for children who are near it. I mean, it's so easily accessible that it can harm children at even younger age than I was, and I'm not for letting this be okay. I agree that you should definitely go with this, and that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a question. So you were able to keep your habit and?
Yeah, I've got two years clean.
Congratulations.[502.58][502.58](APPLAUSE).
The next speaker, Mayor, is Ms. Wendy Walhinger.
Hello, Wendy, welcome.
I want to say that I also agree with this. I also used to be a pothead, and I had gotten in trouble back in 2007 for transporting 47 kilos across the border. I was just like the passenger, so I really agree with this, because it's a good way to keep kids off drugs, and to let people know that this is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wendy Bobb has a question for you, if you don't mind.
Are you also ELC?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker, Mayor, is Aimee Freitas.
Hello, sir, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. Tell me again.
Jamie Freitas.
Okay. Mr. Freitas, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the El Cajon Police Department, the City Attorney, Morgan Foley, code compliance, Mayor Bill Wells, Councilman Steve Goble, Gary Kendrick, Bob McLean, and anyone else that was involved in the closing of the dispensary on Richfield Avenue in El Cajon. It's been one week since it's closed, and it's been the one week not living next to Disneyland. More than, no more hundreds of cars all day long, people walking, hundreds of people all day long and all day night, all night. No more racing cars, loud music, accidents, no more trash, drug paraphernalia on my streets, and I'm sure my property values have gone up. I left you out, Councilman Ben Klasch, Klasch, Klassel?
Kalashow.
Kalashow, sorry. I view you as part of the problem, not the solution. My understanding of what I found out, if you accepted campaign contributions from the man that owns the medical marijuana dispensary, it probably would cost the city tens of thousands of dollars to close down and ruin my neighborhood. So maybe this vote today, depending on how you vote, might change my mind. But currently, that's how I feel. The sad part of this dispensary is gone, it's moved to Second Street in Greenfield, still in the city of El Cajon, so a few blocks away. It's all ready to ruin another neighborhood. I wanted to let everyone know to please keep an eye on the Richfield location. There's been no public there, but there's still a lot of traffic, a lot of people coming and going, don't know what they're doing, don't know if they're storing, delivering, whatever it might be. And any council member that doesn't vote to pass this new ordinance for higher fines and make it a criminal offense in no way has the interest of the people of El Cajon. We have enough issues with liquor stores, homeless, without marijuana dispensaries. There's no economical benefit through taxes, and there's plenty of other cities nearby if those who want to get it can go there and get it. And again, I want to thank you for saving my neighborhood.
Since I was mentioned.
Sure.
I am in favor of medicinal marijuana, as it treats, and it's known to prove to treat people that have illnesses and things like that. I'm not for children smoking marijuana and people abusing it for recreational purposes. And so those are my stances on that. I've seen and read about the help that it has provided people with cancer and other forms of illnesses, so the science is out on that. But as far as it being recreationally, being abused, being next door to your home and interfering with your property, then of course, we wouldn't be for that.
And I agree for the true medical reasons.
Sure.
But I live there, and I've watched.
Absolutely.
So with that, I don't blame you. You understand that people don't need it medically, so that's the issue.
I don't blame you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, I'm good, thank you. And then Morgan, for closed session, what is the rules on that, on discussing closed session items?
You're not allowed to disclose what goes on in closed session.
So we probably need to be looking into who spoke about that during closed session.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand what you're referring to.
During closed session, the last time that when we spoke about the?
It was announced afterwards as to your disqualification.
Correct, but as to the details of the disqualification, those were all in closed session. There was six of us in the room.
Again, I'll have to check the tape, but I believe I actually announced your disqualification. I don't know if you came out and announced it, but I did, just to make certain it was clear why you were not participating.
Let's check the tape.
Thanks for coming.
The next speaker, Mayor, is Clarissa Pion.
Hello. I'm also a resident at East County Transitional Living Center.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. I understand what Ben said as far as having a favor on the medicinal purpose. I, however, understand exactly, from being a consumer and being somebody who went to dispensaries and know how I obtained the so-called licensing in order to be able to go into the The way that I was able to go in and get it was just by paying for a certification in order to obtain whatever it was that I wanted to get from the dispensary. So being of a medical use, yes, there is a purpose for doctors to help people. But as for myself, being an addict, to go in and be able to use money to pay for certification in order to obtain these drugs, which they are, from dispensaries, brings a whole different aspect. And to that, I believe that the city of El Cajon has been doing a great job in trying to make it more family-oriented, so I do ask that you guys go ahead and proceed with hiring the fines.
Do you think a lot of people abuse that process and pretend to have medical problems just to get marijuana to smoke to get high?
That's exactly what it was made for. Sorry.
So if you, you know a lot of people that use medical marijuana?
Absolutely.
How many of them you think are really sick with glaucoma or cancer?
The treatment that you would get from actually, okay, the things that are going on in the dispensaries in order to put it out on the streets is being able to consume it in a way that you're smoking it, or you're taking something by eating. When it's medical marijuana, for the most part, honestly, the only way that it can be utilized in somebody's body to treat them is either by a pill or by a syrup base which is taken in edibly, but for somebody that is not able to swallow. There are different ways in order to perform the medication in order for it to be a medical purpose, but to just be able to go in to get it in order to consume it as an addict is what the dispensaries, to my opinion, are basically doing.
I appreciate your thoughts. Any, anybody else like to mention it? Bob?
Yeah, we had a Highway Patrol officer come to our Rotary Club a few years ago, and he said, "You really don't need to smoke marijuana, you can get a prescription from your doctor for Marinol. It has the same effect of curing your medical need without the addictive effect of the marijuana." So there is a way to do it without using marijuana, and just, it's unfortunate, a lot of people don't realize that.
And in that way, it's?
You can turn the light off.
It's monitored. You're able to have it in doses that are regulated.
Exactly.
The other way, through the dispensaries, you consume as much as you want to, basically.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming, I appreciate your courage. By the way, are you clean and sober now?
Yes, sir.
How long?
Just about eight, two months.
Congratulations.[1020.73][1020.73](APPLAUSE). All right, is that it?
A few more, Mayor.
Okay.
Jenny Belden, Ms. Belden.
Hi Jenny, welcome.
Hi, how are you, sir?
Fine, thanks.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm with ECTLC too. I'm on the borderline of it. I am for what you guys are going for, but I also have to agree, the medical use of it, my brother was dying from Huntington's disease, and that's how the medical marijuana got introduced to my family. I mean, I was, I had started it at a young age, and I picked it up on the streets from some high school kids, but my mom, it tore apart my family, the medical use of it. My brother started, we started my brother on treatments for his Huntington's disease for it, and next thing you know, my mom, when she started to fall apart after my brother passed away, she used it, and like Clarissa had said, there's a limit you can use for, like, your doctor will prescribe a certain amount, like, my brother had a certain amount in the liquid form that we would give him to help him with his disease, and my mom abused that, and a lot of people abused that. She went and paid money for a card, and she went and she completely smoked it till she went insane, and I had to put her in a psych ward because of it. You just got to watch, you know, I'm for it, because a lot of people can be introduced to it, and they're mentally not stable, or they have some psych problems that are not okay with it, like schizophrenia. If you smoke it and you're on schizophrenia, it can send you over the edge, and you can hurt a lot of people, you know, and I've seen that happen, and it's just, El Cajon has become my home recently, and I wouldn't want to see that exposed to it, you know? I've seen it exposed to my family, and my brother's falling downhill because of it, and since he became of age in a certain area, he's able to get a medical marijuana card, and they deliver to him, and it's destroying his life, and he's not doing what he's supposed to be doing, you know, and it destroyed mine, and it just led to other things, and I don't want to see that happen to the society here, you know, the community. The community is nice here, and I like it, you know, and some have been introduced to it here. It's become my home, and I would like that stuff to stay out of here.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry for all your terrible losses.
How long have you been clean?
I've been clean for a few months.
Keep at it, congratulations.[1193.83][1193.83](APPLAUSE).
Next is Lorenzo Higley.
Hello Lorenzo, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, I'm Lorenzo Higley with Casa for Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods. I've worked with you and your council on the regulation of addictive and dangerous substances, everything from alcohol to tobacco to other drugs. And I'm pleased and support your continuing leadership through the adoption of these policies. This is a challenging time for public health, particularly around marijuana. You may have seen the billboard for Weed Maps on Main Street. Well, that documents the availability of marijuana in the many of the businesses, and I'm not sure if they're all currently there, but I brought copies of the printout of those maps for both dispensaries and delivery services here in El Cajon that I wanted to share with The first map is a map of what WeedMaps.com called storefronts. The second map is a map of delivery services, both of which are and continue to be illegal under your municipal code, reflecting their disregard for the health of the city of El Cajon and your existing public policy. The good news is that we've got research-based tools that we demonstrated, documented, and developed with Tobacco Control that allow us to effectively regulate legal addictive and intoxicating substances. Land use is one such tool, and this set of policies is an example of how to do that effectively, and in a way that has demonstrated over time that it works. We've cut tobacco use in the state of California using these same tools in half, and that progress continues. For all of those reasons, we support your council's leadership, adopting these changes, and prohibiting commercial marijuana activities in the city of El Cajon, and protecting the residents of this city as you have in the past. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let me see if there are any questions. Thank you, sir.
Just a comment, Mayor.
Please, Gary.
I'm rather shocked that we have 14 delivery services within the city limits. I think that's according to this map, so I think that's something we need to go after soon.
The next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Mr. Kevin Miller. Mr. Miller.
Mayor and City Council, I'm here to echo what you've heard so far. First of all, thank you so much for fighting so hard for the city. I mean, we've come together on deemed approved, I served on that committee, and it really shown some results, selling to underage kids, and appreciate the battle that you had to go through on that, and that you stuck with it. I served on the homeless task force committee, and the significant contribution by the city, really a leadership role in the county, that's being emulated in other parts of the county. I'm thankful for, and I applaud you. On this one as well, putting teeth to laws is the way that you accomplish these purposes, and I can echo what some other people said. Today, I left the deathbed of a very, well, very good friend, and he was fighting cancer. And during his battle, he was using cannabis as part of the respite from pain. Today, I left him, and he was out of it, he's not going to make it much longer. But it's a charade, I can tell about the dispensaries, and then you can see a completely different purpose that is justifiable. So thank you for seeing through the charade and being serious about this, because it's just a mockery, and I just appreciate you fighting the battle, and you are performing what you were elected for, and we appreciate that, and we back you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1491.33][1491.33](APPLAUSE).
Next, we have Lisa Bridges. Ms. Bridges, please step forward.
Hi, Ms. Bridges, welcome.
Hi, how are you guys? As you just heard, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff, my name is Lisa Bridges, and I'm speaking to you today as an advocate for Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods, and also as a member of SAM San Diego. And I just want to just echo some of the things that have already been said. We just really want to applaud you all for the proposed revisions and the city's efforts in helping to get rid of illegal marijuana dispensaries. They contribute to increased crime, and of course, we all know that that's something that is a huge safety issue here in the city, and we don't need anything to compound that. Dispensaries are backed by a lot of money, as everybody knows. So the fact that you're willing to increase the fines and the penalties is just simply outstanding, and we just applaud you for that, and we thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carol Green, Carol Green, please.
Hi Carol, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Carol Green, I'm the mother of three young adult children, and my husband has been teaching here in El Cajon for 25 years middle school, so he should have gotten a proclamation today too. But anyway, I get to hear the stories of how over the past 25 years, things have changed, not just in the high schools and with our young adults, but with our middle school children. And I'm here to support the proposed revisions and applaud you all on the work that you're doing. We're talking about land use, and we're talking about the commercialization of marijuana, not about the possible medical benefit when a patient and caregiver gather together, but about a storefront that will make more money than the possible $10,000 a day fine, and we've seen this in many other cities where they just stay open. So Mr. Higley gave you a Weed Maps, I want to share something else with you, because sometimes, when I've heard about this, people say, "Well, you know what? You're talking about the illegal dispensaries. If we just regulate it, then everything will be dandy." So I'm going to show you, not too far from here, what's happened in the city of San Diego, just a few pictures of the permitted regulated shops and all the violations that they have. So, there's an effort. It's advertising on petty cabs, sign swirling that says "Free Weed." This is supposed to be a medical shop, and they're "Free Weed." I mean, I don't walk by Kaiser and see a sign that says "Free Penicillin," so I think that it's ridiculous that, I'm not saying there's not a place for things, but this is the commercialization, and really, people taking advantage of the goodwill of people. So I would like to say that I wholeheartedly support the revisions, and by making these, we're doing what we can to reduce crime, to reduce homelessness. In Denver, homelessness has gone up, crime has gone up, and if anybody tells you there's money to be made, look at tobacco and look at alcohol in the places where tobacco and alcohol are prevalent. The cities and communities spend about $8 to $10 more than the taxes they get. Thank you.
Thank you.[1728.26][1728.26](APPLAUSE).
Next, we have J.D. Loveland, Mr. Loveland, it's your turn.
Jenny, welcome back.
Thank you again, thank you again. Well, you've heard from everybody, and I think the thing is, is that you have two sides of the story, you have two different angles coming. And of course, Ben, you bring up a good point there, but I don't think you really know the criminal element that is behind a lot of, the drug usage. You ask any of my people, and listen, I've gone through about 10,000 in the last 10 years, 10,000! Ask 10,000 people about medical marijuana and that sort of stuff, and they'll laugh. A joke, it's a joke. Now, if we can figure out some way to get folks who really, really need this kind of treatment, that's one thing. Hey, the dispensaries, man, come on, I'm telling you, it's about the money, you know it's about the money, and it's not going to help the problem. Now, we've been in this business of trying to help people get back Now, we've been in this business of trying to help people get back on their feet and take these young people and try to help them get a new life and learn new things. It's very, very difficult when they're being fed the lies that this should be legal and that should be legal and hiding behind all that stuff. Anybody's been on the streets, which I have, that's one thing about ECTLC, all of us have been on the streets. We've all been there. We've all done that. We've all told you that legalizing the dispensaries and all that sort of stuff is just a sham. It really is. You might have one out of, what, 1,000? Maybe? I don't know. I don't know what those numbers are going to be. But by and large, you're going to have a bigger criminal element. You have people going in there, buying it, taking it out and selling it. You're going to have a law enforcement logistical nightmare. I mean, you have a lot of problems there, Ben, and that's my own input on that. That's the way I feel, and it comes from personal experience, and as I said, 30 years in the business and thousands of people later. Thank you.
Thank you, J.D.
Thank you. Do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, so I think absolutely everything you said. I think we're all saying the same thing. The issue is conflating the two, you know, you have like with alcohol, which obviously causes more deaths and pain than marijuana across the board, right? I don't think anybody's going to dispute that. And so, with the same thing with alcohol is, we all on a weekend can drink responsibly and with our family and do that, but you get behind the wheel and you're abusing it. You're drinking too many. You're abusing it. It's the same thing in asking anybody from the public to tell you how many people beat glaucoma because of marijuana. We just don't have those numbers. But if you go to Drugofuse.gov, it talks a great deal about the health, like for instance, arthritis with the topical use of marijuana. It's very... You can't conflate the two, you know? So, when somebody said there are no signs that say "Free Tylenol," well, there are signs that say "Free Flu Shots," and we've seen those at Walgreens and things like that. So, if we can find a way, and what we need to find a way to do is to make sure that people who have legitimate medical reasons... I don't know the answer on how to do it, but I do... With that, I'm more libertarian, is if people want to go that route of taking care of their illness, then, and they're adults and they're consenting adults and they have that relationship with their medical doctor, then there's that. But of course, abuse and, you know, leading to crime, and nobody wants any of that. So, we have to have the conversation open and honestly about what marijuana is doing. If it's being abused, we have to slap the fines. We have to outlaw it. If it's helping people, whether it's topically for arthritis or other forms of cancer treatment, and we have to look into it, and we have to talk about it in a responsible way. It's like chemotherapy. Somebody talked about cancer and chemo. Chemo doesn't work all the time for everybody. So, to say marijuana didn't work for this cancer patient and it's a sham, that's also not being honest. So, we're all saying the same thing. I just hate to conflate the two together. Nobody wants young kids to smoke marijuana. Nobody wants marijuana to be the gateway to other things. But I would also argue that if it has medical benefits, which the science is out on that, then that's also a legitimate argument to make.
Well, if we just happen to be that one city that didn't have it, what kind of imposition would that be for that one person who did need to go get it? So, why don't we just have a delivery service for that one person who really needs it as opposed to putting dispensaries in a city who I think a majority, I don't know what the percentage of the people in this city, want to keep this a clean, family-oriented city, and we don't want to. We don't want to. We don't want the pot shops. I mean, why can't we just keep it like that?
Yeah.
Why can't we have one city in the county like that?
Yeah, I think...
I mean, what's wrong with going over to Lakeside or wherever? I don't know where you have pot and something like that.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, so I understand what you're saying. The issue is without the actual data, without, you know, a city that has 100-plus thousand people, you can't...
No, why can't we just be a vice-free city? Why can't we just keep that vice out?
J.D., let me...
Because people need it sometimes.
Let me reframe this. So, we're not discussing today whether or not marijuana should be legal.
Yeah.
We're discussing whether or not we want to raise the fines on illegal dispensaries.
Sure.
So, what do you say about that?
Of course. Of course.
And I say the same, of course.
I'm anti-dispensary, period, but hey, yeah, whatever we can do to keep it from coming this, I mean, whatever we can do.
Seems like you've helped to reach consensus. Thank you very much, J.D. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're almost there, Mayor. Two more.
Okay, that's fine.
Nancy Mika. Mika?
Hello, Nancy. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Mika, and I'm a senior at El Cajon Valley High School.
Wow.
I'm also here with, to represent Stand. It's a public health internship with CASA. I'm here to thank you guys for closing down the, like, to support the provisions for the marijuana, illegal marijuana retailers. And I just want to talk about the fact, yeah, I understand that it's necessary for some people to use marijuana, and I perfectly am fine with that, but speaking as a high school student, it's way too easy to get access to marijuana, and students are getting peer pressure to using marijuana. I mean, I am exposed to marijuana way too much. I see it in streets. When I'm walking to practice, I smell it way, it's way too strong. And I support the people that need to use it, but as high school students, I believe that we shouldn't, it shouldn't be an easy access to us, and we shouldn't be allowed to use it because I'm pretty sure half of my peers don't need marijuana, but they still do it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker, Mayor, is Mr. Humbert Cabrera. Mr. Cabrera?
Humbert, welcome.
Greetings. I want to actually thank the council for all the hard work on this. We've been dealing for this subject for more than a decade, I can remember, and the work that we did with CASA Group and the things that you're doing, the questions that you're asking are the correct questions. I just want to give you a little background. I've been dealing with this kind of situation for 15 years in my business, and I've been to several different council members and city councils throughout Southern California, dealing with the same thing. They're all struggling with the same thing that you are, and I think that El Cajon's actually kind of leading the way. It's actually doing a really good job. What we did with the deemed-approved ordinance and having the small bottles banned, I think we need to revisit, of course, everything that you're doing here, 100% agree. I think the fines should be more, but we actually have to kind of come back and revisit these things, and I hope I'm working, we're working together with CASA and other groups, in order to come and revisit the things that are like, people are selling gummy bears. They're selling Pop Tarts. They're selling little cookies and things like this. And even though we have those banned and we can't do alcohol, for example, to children or tobacco to children, but yet we can do marijuana to children, we need to really, as a city, be in the forefront of that, too. I'd like to work really hard with you guys to come up with ordinances. People deliver them to people's houses, and little children can get a hold of these things. We need to look at the safety and security of all of our citizens, and for that reason, I think that increasing the fines is the tip of the iceberg, and I hope that we can actually work together also with companies that are providing the electrical generators and other things. I've actually talked with several of them, and they don't like it that their generators and their devices are being used when we do shut off their electricity or when we do other things, and they're willing to work with us. So, I'm hoping that the city council continues their good, hard work and that we find a good way to stop most of this, and also I think the zoning ordinances are in the right track by forbidding certain places from a resident as opposed to certain zoning areas. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Humbert.
Mayor, I would just hand in another card. Mr. Tony, say, dial?
Mr. Sottili, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it proper for me to address the issue since I already voted on it as a planning commission, as an individual? Okay. I've heard many good arguments for voting for this zoning, and I agree with everything that has been said. However, I don't agree with Councilman Collacho insofar as, insofar as having medical evidence or the science is in to show that marijuana is beneficial for those people who are sick. It's not the city council prerogative to investigate such things. There is an agency called the Federal Drug Administration. They test all the drugs. They take in all the evidence, and once the evidence has been taken, then they elect whether to allow for the doctors to dispense this kind of medication for whatever ails them. So, as right now, insofar as I know, the Federal Drug Administration has no evidence showing that marijuana is beneficial to people who have various kinds of diseases. And if it were, I would petition the Federal Drug Administration to do so. I would not put it on a ballot to have a vote. In other words, is what do people know about drugs other than what people say? But there is a scientific way of applying the rules and regulations of science, you know, which empirical evidence, which would allow the Federal Drug Administration to do so. So, the argument that the evidence is in and the science is in, I think is not true. Thank you.
No other speakers, Mayor?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion then to close the publisher.
Second.
Move the second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
All right. Counsel, any further discussion?
I think that this, because this item is about illegal marijuana dispensaries, raising the fines, and it got conflated into abuse and medicinal things, that we have to be clear on what we're voting on. We're voting on raising fines for illegal marijuana dispensaries. That was never anything up for contention, at least on this side. So, but the argument is deeper than that, and so for talking about raising fines, this is a no-brainer all the way across, but it's beyond that. And if you're looking to solve the problem as a community, it's, you have to look at stopping the abuse of marijuana, stopping the abuse of alcohol, and so on. So, that's, for a point of clarity for people either watching from home or sitting in the audience, so that's the way, of course, I'm going to vote, is to raise fines for illegal marijuana dispensaries because nobody wants people to take advantage of our youth and to abuse the drug. And so, that, I hope, is the message I am able to convey to everybody, and if you heard otherwise or think otherwise, then you're just simply mistaken.
I have a question. Tony, I hadn't really thought about the delivery aspect of this. How does this ordinance deal with that?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, the code already prohibits deliveries to and from within the city.
So, if there's a delivery service that's based out of El Cajon, then we can also find them?
Yes.
What about a delivery service coming in from outside of the city into our city?
Mayor, that's a little bit more vague because it's going to be difficult to find out who those are, and certainly there are people who have a right to use medical marijuana and now personal consumption of marijuana. But we are banning the deliveries, the operation of delivery systems in this city. So, I think the approach we would take is if somebody has a business and their brick and mortar is in El Cajon, we'd go after them for violating the ordinance.
Oh, thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate that.
And if I could clarify one other thing?
Yes.
It's not just the raising of the fines with this ordinance. It's also to deal with what the council dealt with through the urgency ordinances, and that is to prohibit the personal cultivation of marijuana outside their home or residence, actually is a better term.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought this up because we talked about criminalizing it at this point. Can you explain what that means exactly?
Certainly. When we adopted our original ban against medical marijuana dispensaries, we wanted to avoid a claim that we were violating state laws by keeping people from getting their marijuana and criminalizing the behavior of those who actually have a recommendation. So, in an abundance of caution, we, in essence, decriminalized those, the violations of our zoning ordinance for those purposes. After having gone through this for so long, having heard much more testimony than even today, having handled code enforcement actions in court and injunctions and obtaining the closure of dispensaries, I felt comfortable that that is not the issue. And so, just as any other business can suffer a criminal fine for being in violation of our zoning code, now medical marijuana dispensaries or any marijuana dispensary can be subjected to a criminal violation for being in operation in El Cajon if this ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, counsel. I appreciate that. All right. Any other discussion or questions? Steve?
Mr. Foley, question. Let's clarify delivery services. For instance, if a homebound person with a medical marijuana license had a family member or a caregiver who retrieve medical marijuana for them, that would not be considered a commercial delivery, would it?
That's correct.
So, that person would not be subject to the same laws as somebody who's getting paid to deliver?
That's correct. The California laws currently stands and did before Prop 64 allowed caregivers to obtain the marijuana, bring it to the person they're giving care to, and drive through the streets and deliver it to that house. But they have to, and the entire medical marijuana industry is supposed to be guided by what are called caregivers, primary caregivers, and it's supposed to be those people who can grow it, sell it, or grow it and provide it to the patient, not a dispensary sitting out in the commercial zone in El Cajon.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this issue to me is, does this add value to our community? Do marijuana dispensaries add value to our community? I'd say no. I think if we look at neighboring, you know, neighboring businesses have been, those in the same building, they've been affected by the smell and adversely affected neighboring businesses. That doesn't add value to the community. Mr. Freitas explained his property value. That doesn't add value to the community. So, it's also a question of access. Do we owe the people access? And I think that's already been solved. If you want to go to La Mesa 10 minutes down the road, they've legalized marijuana dispensaries. Go for it. I don't think it creates a hardship for people in El Cajon. If you had to go to Temecula, that's a different argument, but 10 miles down the road, let La Mesa deal with it. Also, I think we don't need to be a leader in this situation. We don't know. They talk about, oh, it's going to, we're losing out on all this tax income. We don't know. You can't even deposit cash from these things into a bank, so you don't really even know what the true taxable base is, and it's arguable that the costs of law enforcement and emergency response might outweigh that. We don't know that yet. We don't need to be a leader in trying to find out that information. Let somebody else take the lead. Let's, we're fine. Let's, this doesn't, this doesn't add value to our community.
I've always believed that the primary purpose of local government is to protect the citizens. Police, fire, paramedics, and now we're protecting them from the criminal element that many times is involved with these illegal marijuana dispensaries. I've received many phone calls from residences and from businesses regarding illegal marijuana dispensaries over the last couple of years, and it really causes a decline in the value of the property. I could put my real estate appraisers hat on and say, "That's considered a nuisance" because you've got cars going up and down the street, all sorts of bad things happening near the marijuana dispensaries. In fact, my chiropractor is over right next to the Wendy's on Broadway in El Cajon, and a marijuana dispensary opened up in the same building and caused him all sorts of problems. And it got to the point where the city was going to turn off the electricity, and they told him, "Well, if we turn off the electricity, it has to go off to the whole building because it was all in one meter." He says, "I don't care. Turn off the electricity," and he put in electric lanterns so he could still adjust people. That's how much of a burden it was to his business, and we smelled marijuana every time I'd go in there. I'd spill marijuana in the building when I'd go inside of his office. And we have had testimony today from residents about the problems these marijuana dispensaries cause, and I think Councilmember Goble makes a good point that you can just drive where the Lemon Grove, or you can drive over to La Mesa to get it. And we've always been on the cutting edge in this city on protecting our citizens. We did it with deemed-approved. We did it with deemed-approved, which for the benefit of some of the students in the audience, this is probably the toughest anti-alcohol ordinance in the state of California, and, you know, it helps against drunk driving. We can't even stop drunk drivers right now, let alone people driving under the influence of marijuana. So, I'm going to support this ordinance. I think we're going in the right direction.
Any other thoughts or would you like to make a motion?
I'd move to introduce the next ordinance in order of approving the amendments to the municipal code.
Move the second one. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor. I'd like to read the title of the ordinance.
Yes, please do.
Thank you, sir. An ordinance of the El Cajon City Council, amendment titles one and seventeen of the El Cajon Municipal Code, to increase fines and penalties for violations of land use ordinances and to add a new chapter, seventeen point two four three, addressing personal cultivation of marijuana and prohibiting all commercial marijuana activity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Daryl.